Call the meeting to order. All those rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. All members are present. Approval of the agenda. Is there any changes? Vicky? Counsel? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the January 3rd, 2024 regular meeting. You'll receive them in your packet. Is there any changes or clarification needed within those minutes? Hearing nothing. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 3rd meeting?
You'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. This brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. We'll then move on to reports and presentations. Police Department Monthly Report. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Activity report for December 2023. Some of the numbers we had, we had 12 alarm calls. We had 60 patrols at Walmart. We had 25 medicals. We did 350 traffic stops. We had 52 patrols at the schools. We had 25 administrative citations. We gave out 21 winter parking warnings. We did 10 personal assists. We had five unwanted person calls, seven intoxicated person calls, 13 suspicious person calls, 12 child custody issues. For total activity of 855. Compare that to last year. We are up 127. And compare that to last month, we're up 67 calls. So we'll have the end of the year report for 2023. We should have that numbers by the end of, in the February meeting. We are in phase one of the new Axon body cameras and tasers. So they are being worn right now by us and along with the tasers. And then in March and April, hopefully they'll be in the squad cars, the new cameras. So that's going right now. So that's kind of where we're at. That's the end of the monthly report. And then I have another... Something I want to read to you. Dear Mayor, Administrator, and Council, I'd like to formally announce my retirement from the City Sock Center Police Department as Chief of Police. My last day as chief will be April 29th, 2024. I would like to thank the Mayor, City Council, and my boss, Vicky Willer, for the never-ending support that you have shown to me in the last 16 years. It's been much appreciated and did not go unnoticed. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the people and community of Sock Center. It's been a privilege and honor to provide service for the last past 60 or 36 years. To my officers, I want to, want you to know how very much I appreciate your dedication and professionalism you have exhibited to this job and myself. Always remember to back each other up and to be safe out there. To my fellow colleagues, the friendships and experiences we have made together will last me a lifetime. I cannot thank you enough. Melissa, a simple thanks doesn't seem to adequate, seem adequate enough for the 16 years of you assisting me. You are the backbone that keeps this department running smoothly. In ending, many thanks and God bless. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you've done. He went and sat down. Was there any questions, Brian? Public Works Monthly Report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Over the past month, plowing and sanding has taken place several times now this year. We did clean up and haul snow from the downtown area. That has happened once so far. Snow pusher, we had to do some work to that and replace the cutting edge that was a little wore from last year. Outdoor rink, we started flooding that last Friday. We're continuing to work on it this week and we're prepping the inside of the warming house. Plan is for the rink to be ready to use this weekend. Dennis will be down there working weekends at the outdoor rink like in the past, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. During the week, we will have the building unlocked in the mornings and then working with the PD to lock it up at night. So the warming house will be open Monday through Thursday, but there won't be anybody there staffing it. Up at the arena, tournaments are happening each weekend now, so weekly ice maintenance is ongoing. Checking ice steps, edging and xamping is needed. We did replace a compressor cooling fan motor and then also garage door head of chain that snapped, so that's fixed now. Our storm sewer steamer trailer was in our shop for about a week. We did a lot of maintenance and upgrades to that to make it a little more user-friendly come this spring, so that's done and ready for use. Any questions I can answer?
With the warm weather coming next week, is that outdoor rink going to hold up to it?
We're hoping so. Yep. There will be about two, three inches of ice, so with the temps getting below freezing at night, I think it'll be okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
So the Airport Board met in regular session on Wednesday, November 8th. We did look at the map depiction of the AWAS relocation project. What the AWAS is, is the Weather Observation Cent or System that's up on the tower. And because of a future project with a potential box hanger, which is the next item, is it can't be that close to the building, and so it has to be relocated. There's some questions on whether we can relocate the existing equipment or if we'll need to purchase new equipment, but hopefully we'll be able to just replace the existing. Then the next step was the potential box hanger construction. They're looking at an 80 by 80 hanger, which potentially would be the new location for Central Plains that would allow us to rent their hanger out to someone else and then free up T-hangers. So we're kind of shuffling around rather than trying to build a new T-hanger, which are very high-priced right now. We also looked at a reviewed, we reviewed the proposed revised purchase offer for the 11-acre parcel. You guys had met at that once before on the real estate side, but this is the relocation assistance portion of that, which our representatives are reviewing for compliance. And we'll know in the coming days whether that's going to go through. And then also the fuel system upgrade project out there. We still waiting on some, the Fuel Master vendor for some final upgrades and then we can close out that project. So I have no action items for the council tonight.
Questions? Okay. Then we'll move on to action items. 7A, approve resolution 2024-06 authorizing sale of sand rake?
As you know, we had entered into an agreement to purchase the new Toro sand rake or used Toro sand rake, which has finally arrived. And so then the old sand rake was offered for sale through the online bidding process through MinBid. The successful bidder was Central Equipment. It was actually a Smithco Super Rake, was the brand of the old one. It was sold for $810. We're looking to approve resolution 2024-06 authorizing the sale of the sand rake.
Questions? Concerns? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the resolution 2024-06?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7B, approve final pay application C and L excavating 2022 project.
So this is the 10th and final pay application from C and L excavating for the project. This is Second Street. As you, the revised contract was $4,674,46102. Actually, after all said and done, the actual quantities total was $4,343,24368. So we are less than we actually thought we were going to spend for the actual physical C and L excavating contract. We had already paid out $4,187,9985, so that leaves amount due today of $149,52083. So that's what we're looking to is approve pay request number 10 for $149,520 and 83 cents as the final pay request to C and L excavating. We will have some other final expenses that have to come out of that account. There'll be some STANTEC bills and some other, some other smaller items that we're also looking at, whether we have to do anything additional on the street lighting and those types of things that'll have to be paid yet. Otherwise, we'll be able to close that account. And Engineer Chuck Bosser, he was actually the lead on that project. So if you have any specific questions about him, he can certainly answer those. But right now, we're looking to approve that pay request number 10.
Questions? Concerns? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the pay request number 10 for $149,520 and 83 cents?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. Any last minute questions or concerns? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7C, approve resolution 2024-07 supporting detachment.
So we received a petition for detachment that has been received by the city for property. It's at the end of Morningview Drive. It's currently owned by Wayne and Brianna Sensz, and I did put in your packet overview on the GIS portal of that property. The basis for the detachment is the property cannot be served by city water and city sewer, and it also lies adjacent to township property. If the city and the township both support the detachment, then it's forwarded to the Office of Boundary Adjustments at the state for approval by an administrative law judge. I did include in your packet resolution 2024-07 supporting the detachment if that is the direction you wish to go. Mr. Sensz, are Wayne Sensz is here in the audience if you have any questions for him?
Questions? Concerns?
I guess one thing I look at with this in supporting is if we extend that road beyond there, that he's going to have the frontage along that road and the city, while may not connect to the sewer and water, we are still looking at all the other services that we'll provide within that, that area and that street that he'd enjoy the benefit of while not being a member of the city. So I guess those are some things that I'm looking at as potential concerns there.
Okay. What kind of front ear footage is on that sport?
Well, it depends on where we would put this future road. If we went up and then went parallel along the west boundary of the property, would there be more or less? We kind of need to hug that property line just because of the wetlands that are out there. But it could be the 70 feet that is on actually the Morningview Drive, Morningview Road Extension, or it could be more if the road goes right adjacent to the property. And Joe is right that, you know, if it's a township parcel, we can't assess that township parcel. We can go to the township itself and request participation. Hasn't always been successful. Like a Minnet Drive is kind of an example of that, if we wanted to, you know, when you border another jurisdiction. But yeah, that's, that's a risk or that's an expense then that we would have to put in the city share if we were to do that.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on this? Very good point, Joel, as far as the assessment part. I know if it would stay, if he would stay in the city, irregardless of what this water and light says, if the bound, if his property lines within 200 feet of the water and sewer main, they're required to hook up. So I'm not certain.
So in this situation, before the Sensz bought the property, the prior owner, at that time, the policy was 300 feet from the sewer to your residence. And the residents would be way in the back of this property, which was well over 300 feet. So then they gave a, they passed a resolution or gave a letter to the property owner that was transferable to the new owner that said that they would allow a septic and a well on that. Since that time, the public utilities has amended their policy that if you're within so many feet of the property line of the property to be developed rather than the location of the residents on that property. So today's rules would be required to hook up. However, he has a previous exemption, if you want to call it that, from the requirement by the PUC to hook up.
Any questions about that?
That doesn't mean he can't have a septic and well in the city itself. It's just that because he doesn't have it, that that would be a valid reason for detachment.
Now, what you just stated kind of opens it up to anybody could have a septic and well, which isn't true.
No, if you can, no, if he's too far away, we can still allow it, like the PUC policy. Not, if you're within the two, what it is now, the 200 feet, you have to hook up.
If your property line's within 200 feet of water or sewer main, you are required to hook up and they're not allowed.
Right. I don't think, I think maybe his is the last exemption that's out there. I think there's some, I think it's the last one now that's out there that would have the ability to do that.
Any other concerns?
So if I'm, if I'm understanding right, he does have the ability to put in septic and well himself?
Yes.
Because of the exemption?
Because of the exemption. So the purpose of the detachment would be for what other than to have its own city or its own well and septic, which he can have, if I'm understanding this right?
Why does he want to detach out because of that? I mean, that's just one of the valid reasons to be able to detach out. I mean, I'm sure he's got personal reasons why he would prefer to be in the township versus in the city. So, I mean, you could certainly ask him those questions.
I just see that the basis for the detachment is the property cannot be served by city water and city sewer.
And what that is, is that one of the findings when you do a detachment is that, you know, city services like that are not available to the property.
But could be in the future, is what Joe is saying.
Well, they, they would be actually now, he's just got the exemption is where he'd be at today. I guess my, where I was at is if we develop that road and, I mean, whether he's getting assessed for the road frontage, but I mean, we're still going to be providing all the services with clearing the snow and all those things that we have it as a city expense that there'd be no con, you know, nothing that, that property owner would reimburse the city for, and he just enjoyed the benefits of everything at the rest of the taxpayers.
No, the one, the one thing, like the manhole is probably 80 feet shy of the end of the tar. That's where the line ends right now, when you go up that road. The sewer actually flows south and then it cuts cross-country from there. So very unlikely we would take and extend the sewer out across this new road, but there would be the roadway itself, the construction of a roadway itself, and like you said, the maintenance and everything. I don't think that the public utility would want to run the sewer line through there because the other side is serviced from that way. So like, kind of separates there and goes each direction.
The one, the one item that I know of by being in township compared to the city is, once you're in the township, you don't have to follow any of the state building codes or any of the city codes or ordinances on whatever you build out there. So I don't know if that's the reason or not, but that's one of the things that stands as another option for the detachment, I would think.
The potential of this road continuing as we look towards Highway 71 as an alternate route to the north end of town, is that what we're looking at? Or, I mean, we haven't really discussed that yet, but could it be as soon as that?
We haven't discussed it a whole lot. This was all kind of laid out in the past when it was plotted, that eventually that would connect through there. And so when we had the preliminary conversations with MinDOT, they were concerned about an emergency access of getting across the river for hospital and emergency vehicles. And so they looked at potentially having that road connected. And eventually sometime in the future, it'll be connected when that city property back there is developed. We just don't know when that would happen. It could happen in two years. It could happen in 15 years. I think the road connection is something that the city council is just ultimately going to have to make a decision on. We just don't know when that would be. MinDOT's Highway 71 project could be the catalyst that makes that happen.
And at that time, if, if this were granted and Mr. Sensz would like to be still a part of the township, but we would say, you know, because of this, we need you to be part of the city, can we request an annexation? Or does he have to request an annexation?
Or to come back, you mean?
Yes. Like if we, could we annex, forcefully annex?
We can't take him back. Well, he is surrounded on three sides by city, so there's some exemptions there. But typically, you would not take somebody back without a certain percent of the property owners wanting it. So if he doesn't want to come back, we're not going to make him come back. So.
Can, and to go along with Joel's point, if we allow the detachment, can we put a stipulation that is that that road goes through that lot, whether it's township or not, still be assessed? Is there?
It wouldn't be an assessment, but you could have some kind of stipulation that the township would be aware of, that then it's actually the township that would be responsible and not the individual property owner. And then they would have to take that into consideration when they acted on the detachment. They say, yeah, we'll accept you, but you have to realize that if the road assessment comes in, in an X period of time, you'd have to determine that, that then they would have to be more, not necessarily an assessment, but an agreement that they would reimburse the city for those, that cost. I don't know if they would do that.
I don't know either. That, that would be, because it's got to be approved by both the city and the township.
It does, yeah.
But to say if the city would put that stipulation on, then it would be up to the township. Just asking the question, or even if it's a possibility, I don't know. But like Joe says, if you're not in the township, well, basically everybody up on Minnet Road on the west side all gets, gets the benefit of us plowing the roads and they just open up their driveway and they get to use it. So I don't know what the difference would be down, out here. Because the township refuses to let us do anything with that road.
Which road was that?
The top of Hoboken Hill, Minnet Road. On the west side of that road is all township property, except for where Tim DeShane lives, where he annexed in.
And so we plow that too, then?
We plow that and keep it open, but the township gets the benefit of it and those people that live in the township. So it isn't like it's, this here's an, out of the ordinary Counsel want to?
Yeah, absolutely.
You want to come up to the?
So as of right now, that road doesn't even go to our property. And I have an easement from the city to actually take down a big tree that I would actually have to incur the expense to even access my property at this point. So without a road there, I'm actually incurring some expenses on my own already. So.
Okay. So right now, we probably just plow the snow to the end and you're going to have to find a way to get through our snowplow.
I'm sure, I'm sure, yeah, no, this pile exists just dirt right at the end of that new, new purchase, or whoever just bought that next year, right?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, all of the expenses as of right now, I'm going to drive to meet with you guys. So I guess my opinion, I would not want to kind of double it.
Right.
So I'll have to develop a road back to our property, on your property, which I have easement for, but that's going to mean to incur on our expense.
Sure. Okay. Many other questions of Wayne? What is the council's wishes? Or do you have more to, you want to discuss? Do we approve resolution 2024 supporting the detachment? Or do we add stipulations to it or deny it?
It's something we want to consider, what stipulations would be reasonable and see if that's something from a council level we want to put in place. Is it the conversations we have with the property owner, see exactly what kind of the intentions and thoughts, some of those things, just to evaluate and make sure we have the best decision versus just taking action with a denial or, you know, putting stipulations on without really evaluating them here, you know? Giving some more reflection, I don't know. I think if we give it a, give it a time to review it.
You basically say and table it until we?
Table it, table it to just ponder on what stipulations would make sense potentially there, or if we're just comfortable with supporting a detachment or, or denying the request. I mean, I think to give it some true thought and reflection.
70 feet of just rebuilding a road and putting in the tar and the curb and gutter along there, whether it has utilities in it or not, it's still a fair amount of money. Sure.
Yeah.
So I had discussed the utilities with Glenn Bauer at the PUC, and he has said that they'll probably never run water or sewer across there because there's no reason for it. So it's going to dead end to my neighbor's yard. And then it'll go from the other way to, if you guys ever develop that city property on the north side of us, we're surrounded by swamp essentially. And there's no way to get pot of the water to our property, really. If it's too far around, we'd never be able to drink the water. We'd have to run water forever in order to get drinking water. So getting the services there are pretty much not useful.
Okay?
Yeah, from the PUC. Yeah, the PUC utilities.
Right.
You'd still connect to the electric, I'd assume?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. That'd be in that same, our service area. Yeah. So. Okay. So what's the council's wishes?
I think I'd agree with Joe to maybe table it and vet all areas that are discussed tonight before making a
I'll second it.
A conclusion.
Okay. Was that a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. A motion by Heidi to table this until we get more information or discussion as far as possible attachments to the detachment.
So are you looking like for some type of an agreement on a future possible road cost share?
Right. Yeah. That's the way I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. And Diane seconded it. Is there any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7D, approve ordinance 828 amending Chapter 94 of the city code by establishing fees for emergency protection, fire services for property within the city and property in towns under fire service contracts.
Sorry, that was kind of long. But I'll say, so currently our city code authorized our city to, to bill property owners for costs incurred when the fire department is dispatched, which we do. Those bills are either then forwarded to the owner's insurance company, paid directly, or written off as uncollectible. Minnesota state statute now allows those unpaid invoices to be certified for collection with property taxes on property both within the city limits and also on property in the areas of our fire protection service area, which includes the townships and cities that we provide service to. So if the fire department is dispatched and it results in a, a bill to that property owner, then we have the ability now to actually certify that to property taxes as an alternative to writing them off as uncollectible. Usually, or now, we have an average of $4,000 a year is written off for the fire department. So you kind of figure out how much that was cost. I did put our existing code in there, and then the highlighted in yellow and underlined are the changes that we're proposing to our city code. But the real, the, the crux of it all is on page 33, item F, which says if the fire service charge remains unpaid for 30 days after the notice of delinquency is sent, the city council may also, before October 15th of each year, certify the unpaid fire service charge to the county auditor in which the recipient of the services owns real property for collection with property tax. So that is really what the crux of this is, is to give us that one additional option for the collection of fire service bills. And like I said, that typically results in about $4,000 a year that is currently written. And like I said, that typically results in about four thousand dollars a year that is currently written off as uncollectible that then would be able to be collected that way. And so that is ordinance eight twenty-eight of, uh, eight twenty-eight amending the city code by authorizing certification to taxes of unpaid fire service bills.
Questions, concerns, everyone understands?
Do, one quick question I do have, uh, when you say on average, uh, four thousand is written off each year, is that, how many people does that represent that that would potentially impact? Is that like five people who have that?
It would be somewhere usually between seven or eight, probably. It's some, it depends on, every fire call is different. It could be four hundred dollars, it could be a thousand dollars, it depends on the fire call and how many hours they're out there.
Main thing is, is at least now, instead of just writing it off, we can put it toward their taxes.
Right, right.
Right.
Before we couldn't, so. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Diane to approve ordinance eight twenty-eight. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries four in favor, none against, one abstention. Seven E, approve ordinance eight twenty-nine, authorizing summary publication of eight twenty-eight.
And now that you've adopted ordinance eight twenty-eight amending the city code regarding billing for fire services, I did provide an attached ordinance authorizing summary summary publication of that ordinance if the title of the summary ordinance clearly depicts the content. And so what we would publish is an ordinance of the city of Sock Center authorizing summary publication of eight twenty-eight amending chapter ninety-four of the city code relating to charging for fire services within the corporate limits and also within areas protected by fire fire service agreement with the city. So because that ordinance eight twenty-nine, uh, pretty well describes what we're doing here, then we're authorized to do summary publication. Uh, adoption of this ordinance does require a four-fifths vote to pass. So that's what I'm requesting is to approve that ordinance.
Okay, questions? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance eight twenty-nine?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Shallen, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries four in favor, none against, one abstention. Seven F, approve acknowledgement of posting of pay equity report.
So every three years, the city is required to certify compliance with pay equity laws in the state of Minnesota. The pay equity law was established to monitor how governments pay employees to verify that employees are paid for comparable work. And that gender is not a factor. The report has been generated using the pay rates for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which is attached. The report indicates that the city of Sock Center passes. After the council acknowledges the report has been completed and sees the results, it is then uploaded to the state for verification. I did attach for you the compliance report, which gives a statistical analysis test and a salary range test, both of which indicate that the city passes. And so what happens when we enter all of this in, it generates a chart and it puts a predicted pay line of everybody's pay. And every, the more points you have or the more value assigned to your job, the higher up you go. So typically, your line is supposed to go just at an angle up, and ours ours does comply. So I'm asking you to acknowledge the completion and posting of the twenty twenty-four pay equity report, which authorizes me to upload it to the state.
Questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
You have a motion by Diane to approve the acknowledgement, acknowledge the completion and posting of the twenty twenty-four pay equity report. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven G, approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight IRS reimbursement regulations for electrical utility bonds.
So the Sock Center public utility is currently anticipating the construction of an electrical substation at the present time at an estimated cost of sixteen million dollars. If the public utility proceeds with the project with the issuance of bonds and they wish to reimburse itself with costs incurred prior to the issuance, it must declare its intent to do so to comply with IRS regulations. Any bonding that is requested by the public utility must go through the city council because the public utility is not authorized to incur debt. Uh, the attached resolution sets forth the procedures relating to compliance with the IRS regulations. Uh, it does say seventeen million because our bond console had said that they always offer, uh, uh, up it a little bit just to to be safe and also to cover the bond issuance costs. Uh, how a bond would work for this, and electric utility bonds are different than any other kind of bond you've ever issued here since you've been in, and, uh, so they have different steps that we would have to take to issue that bond. But it would be in the name of the city and it would be some, a type of a revenue bond that would be paid solely from the proceeds of the electric utility. So we would get the bond, they would reimburse us, we would make the bond payment, similar to other bonds that we've done in the past. So this resolution is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
Questions, concerns? This is the normal procedure we usually done for the street projects.
Does this carry any other, uh, extra weight, though, when it comes to the city's, um, like debt burden when it comes to audit time? Does it affect our credit ratio or our credit score, or what is?
It include, it would affect our bond rating. Because any debt that you incur does. It would not go against our debt limit because it is supported by electrical utility revenues. So our debt limit, no, our bond rating, yes.
Bond rating negatively?
Anytime you carry more debt as in relationship to the size of your city, it has an effect on your on your bond rating, yes. So it would, it could technically be a negative toward our bond rating for other future bonds that we would want to get because they would look at how much we're committed to now. Now, one of the other parts is of this is whether it's a GO bond, which is a general obligation bond. If we attach the GO to it, then the full faith and credit is pledged. If we have, if we attach just the electric utility revenue, then that is less of a negative toward our credit rating because we're not pledging the full faith and support of the taxpayers, so.
There's a whole lot of information that I don't know.
It's a lot of information, we understand. A lot of information, issuing bond and issuance of debt is very complicated, and I wouldn't expect you guys to delve into that.
I just asked the question, just thinking of future capital improvement projects, that if we do end up having to bond for anything, then we're looking at us carrying a higher or possibly higher interest rate for for paying back the bond. Okay.
But we could always sneak in before then.
Okay.
One of the things is, is irregardless, we have to do the bonding for the PUC.
Yeah.
Because they can't. So whether we authorize the reimbursement, try to get help with reimbursement costs now and when it gets to the bond, or if we wait till the bond shows up, either way, it's kind of a catch twenty-two.
Whether we like it or not.
Whether we like it or not.
Yeah.
Because if we're in a, the PUC, if they're going to improve the system or the grid or anything like that, the substation needs to happen, so. And they're already starting to order parts for it.
Okay.
But it could be a year and a half out before it's complete.
Yeah, this doesn't obligate us to do anything, it's just that if they do decide to bond, that we've taken this step to allow that reimbursement.
Right.
Okay.
So. Any other questions? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Last minute comments. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven H, approve advancement of EMT Sarah Larson.
So Kathy Struford, ambulance director, recommends that Sarah Larson be advanced to a probationary EMT. She states, I would like to recommend Sarah Larson for promotion from emergency medical responder or EMR to probationary EMT level with pay increase according to the city's pay policy effective January third, twenty twenty-four. This will grant Sarah full privileges and responsibilities of a probationary EMT with the city. Uh, Sarah came to us as a licensed EMR and began with our service on eight seventeen of twenty-three. In August, she started her EMT classes and training and successfully passed all her required classroom skills and FISDA testing. She took the National Registry Written Examination and passed that as well. Sarah continues to be an asset to our service, she works well with other crew members as an EMT and will continue to learn and grow. So what we're looking to do is approve the advancement of Sarah Larson from an EMR, which is an emergency medical responder or driver or first responder, I guess you can call it any of that, to promotion, to probationary EMT effective January third, twenty twenty-four.
Questions, concerns?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a, I have a motion from Diane to approve advancement of Sarah Larson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, appointment to CBB board.
So at the last council meeting, uh, the council tabled an appointment request of Maria Westbrock to the CBB board. Uh, they, the council had a couple of questions, one was the residency issue uh, with her residing outside of our service area, which is defined as, or has been defined as this, of the Sock Center School District, and she lives in Long Prairie. And the second part was, uh, some questions regarding having, uh, two members on the board, uh, one being employer and one an employee of the same business in town. So those were the two items that were kind of being questioned and you guys wanted to kind of wrap your heads around. And so now I'll turn it back over to Warren, I think you spoke with Maria?
Yes, I did, and, uh, like Vicky stated, she lives in Long Prairie. The only, the only thing she does up in Long Prairie, she says, is she lives there. Everything else is done in Sock Center. She's not applying through as an employee of where her boss is also a member, the Palmer House. She isn't applying as through their business center, Inc. So it's, and she sees no conflict between her boss and her on being on the same board. Center, Inc., though, is located in Long Prairie, when you pull it up. Now, the other thing Pam brought to me tonight is the visit CBB board bylaws doesn't have any regulations as far as where they can pull membership in from. And I don't know if that, if the city overrides what the CBB bylaws are, or that's one of those things I figured I'd mention to see what.
The, um, the appointment to the CBB is governed by the city council.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter what their bylaws state as far as their membership, they may have, they may have additional rules, but they can't supersede our rules because you're the appointing body.
All right.
So you would, you would be, ours is, uh, eight, I believe it's eight members, one representing the city council, one representing the chamber, and six from representative businesses or individuals within the community.
Right. Okay. So anyone, that's the information that I found out. One other thing is, is I do need to mention, is we just did not appoint somebody to the senior center board because they moved to Alexandria. So I don't know if you guys consider that a precedent or not because we're the governing board. I'm gonna leave it up to the council to discuss what your wishes are and what you want to do with the facts that we have here laid out.
I think on one hand, I I appreciate having somebody with interest to serve on Visit Sock Center because there's a lot of work that needs to be done through that board. So I appreciate anybody showing willingness to to do that. And also, even having a business or living outside, but wanting to serve on this board, to me, doesn't, I don't think that that presents, what's the phrase I'm trying to think of? I don't think that that's a conflict of interest where, like, they would want to be pulling business away or visits away. Could it be that she's wanting to learn to bring it to Long Prairie to have more opportunity to serve the community and find ideas to bring that that way? That's, you know, something I would question, but does that pull away from Sock Center? I don't think so.
And I guess my feelings are, uh, I appreciate that she's a member of other boards within the city or other groups, entities within the city. So to me, that shows an interest in building up things here, so. I don't, that's that's kind of where I'm at. So I don't, the residency part doesn't make a huge difference to me in this case.
Okay.
I guess I look at, look at the, you know, um, I'd ask what the ordinance says, and it's, you know, the one one representative from the chamber, one from the city council, and then six from representative businesses and individuals within the community, which she doesn't meet, and I know Heidi kind of touched on, maybe she's looking to bring those ideas there, um, and the willingness to serve and some of those things. And I think the fact she's willing to serve and, yeah, she's a resident of another community, but she's still looking to help improve Sock Center. And realistically, she's one of eight potential votes, so I mean, I don't think she's gonna be able to have a negative impact on the overall result, uh, you know, as far as not representing the best interests of Sock Center with with her actions, so. Um, I I don't have those, I guess, concerns against somebody who's who's willing to serve and um, it's been a struggle, I think, on a lot of our boards, so the, to have somebody willing to step up and and do that. And I know she, on her application, was, um, also part of the Community Connection, I believe it was, as as well as serving with the Healing Nest Board, I believe was the other thing I seen on there, so. Um, certainly somebody who has a passion and cares about some of these things, so.
Okay, Diane?
As far as I'm concerned, I I think we set the precedent by not letting that person serve on the senior center board when they moved to Alexandria.
Okay.
So, that's my concern.
I could go either way on this, it's this pure fact that, like she said, did we send a precedence? We were following our guidelines at the time. The CBB is a different animal. You know, it's one that I wish that, uh, the community would jump on the bandwagon more with all our boards. They all have plenty of ideas when you're standing on the street, but they won't come in on a board and do anything with them and take ownership, um, slam intended. It's maybe it's something, we do it on, we let this happen this time, and if it's not working or it's looking like it's detrimental, we have the power to take care of that, so. What's the council's wishes?
I guess I'd make a motion to approve the appointment.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there more discussion?
I don't, just on top of that, I don't think that setting the precedence means that we're gonna have people coming from Melrose, Alexandria, Osakis to sit on our boards. I don't foresee that happening because I think this is a problem a lot of cities run into is trying to get members to serve on their own boards, so.
To me, where, at least in my opinion, where the difference comes to me is just the fact that she has been involved with the Community Connection and, uh, other businesses in town. If that wasn't there, then I would question it.
Yeah.
And absolutely, but somebody who's willing to step up and somebody who's willing to do multiple things in the community, I think that's where, that's where it is for me.
Yeah.
We have a motion by Heidi, do I have a second by Shallen?
A motion by Shallen, second by me.
Okay, vice versa, all right. Uh, to make the appointment, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Main thing about the whole process, at least shows us, we did our due diligence and made sure that we just didn't take the first applicant that came through the door.
Exactly.
We did our homework, so.
Yep.
We have no new business, we'll then go on to our consent agenda. We have a schedule of claims of one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-four cents. As you can see, one of them was the one, the bond payment, that was the reason why that came, so. We have a list of checks, December paid claims and payroll of five hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. We have Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, accepting contributions from the Greenwald Rec Club of two thousand dollars. Greenwald Rec Club of two thousand dollars to be allocated to the ambulance department for the ALS setup. And on behalf of the city, and I want to acknowledge that contribution and thank them for that. We also have the twenty twenty-three contribution list. These are all the organizations and individuals that have contributed money or in-kind services to the city in twenty twenty-three. That list will be printed in the Sock Center Herald tomorrow. So I will not go through that list. Gambling application for exempt permit requests from Holy Family School for a raffle on March third, twenty twenty-four at Holy Family School. Is there any questions about the consent calendar? Or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. We have no informational items. This now brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Shallen, do I have a second? Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.